Okay, good evening. We'll pull the meeting to order. Please drive for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot of individuals in the audience tonight, so I guess we're gonna have a lot of public comments. So, what will be the meeting up to, public comment? Okay, well, closed public comment, and I think this is what everybody's been waiting for. Our special presentations tonight, it's the first month of the new school year, so tonight we're gonna introduce Month of September, Student of the Month. So, we'll have our principals come up, and we do introduce you.
Okay, so, we have, we're recognizing two individuals at the elementary school for this month, and Dr. Rack is actually gonna speak about them for all the hard work that they've done during the first couple of weeks of school for us.
So, this is a bit of a reoccurring theme at the beginning of the year with our Student of the Month. As you may know, we welcome our kindergarten students, and this year we're welcoming 137, and it's our biggest class in the building. And, as you can imagine, a good percentage of them may not have a lot of exposure to school routines or being in a building that has close to 750 students. So, we always ask and employ our help of our fifth grade students to assist with dismissal and so forth, and it's, I think it's one of the highlights of our school because you just get to see the pureness and humanity of children helping each other. But, this time in particular, we had, we had one student in particular that had some compromised needs, physical needs, and it was both a safety risk, and it could be dangerous, the weight of orientability. So, I appealed to our kind, our fifth grade teachers for some responsible students to help him with dismissal, as well as arrival on and off the bus. And, with that, we were given the pleasure of working with Sierra Timmer and Gaisley, who will close. You can join us up here. They were selected by... They're very proud of them, they're very protective of all of the students that they helped, but very much in particular to this one student, and it just, it just makes for the start of the school year all the more better, and we get to see the greatness of humanity in elementary kids.
Well done, girls. We're gonna get a couple of pictures.
Miss Collins is gonna take the pictures, or Miss... Lemic, Karen's, come on up.
Make us get into it.
One more over here.
Speech.
All right. Great job, girl.
Congratulations. Thank you, girl.
Okay, so, for the middle school, many of you may know, and I think Mrs. Brooks is doing a presentation on this tonight, the summer...
The Summer Wonder Academy, not the Online Five.
Okay, so, during the summer, Ms. Brooks put together an online math program for students to keep up with their math skills, so they didn't fall behind, or do that summer regression that we hear so much about. And, one of our students used it for much more than that. Daniel, you wanna come up? All right, so, you quote this, and I'll tell a little, little facts about this. Daniel did 2,360 minutes of math work this summer. Correct my math if I'm wrong, please. I think that's 240 hours worth of math work, and I think that works out to be, if you take about the nine weeks during the summer, about four and a half hours a week. So, I think he's ready to go, I think there's a math future in his, a math program in his future, so, Daniel, that's really great work, that's what we want to see when we come to middle school, and you're gonna use it really well. Congratulations.
Great job, Daniel.
One more. Congratulations.
The Highland High School Student of the Month for September 2019 is Sidney Dropman. Sidney, come on up. Sidney is an excellent student and an avid singer. Sidney has landed a lead role in all of the musicals here at Highland High School since her freshman year. This past summer, Sidney has had, she had the opportunity to attend the Honors Performance Series Program in Sydney, Australia. Sidney and her family spent two weeks in Australia while she participated in the program. There were only 118 students accepted in the program out of 12,000 students who auditioned. So, 118 out of 12,000, impressive. Participants worked with Dr. Lynn Gackel for four days, then performed seven pieces of difficult choir music on the fifth day. In addition to English, some of the pieces were in Latin, Italian, and even in native Australian. According to Sidney, it was an awesome experience to get to know other musical students from around the world, and to stay with them in the hotel. I have remained in contact with many of them, and I hope to maintain lifelong relationships with them, despite the differences in time zones. It was a once-in-a-lifetime experience. According to Sidney's teachers, she is described as friendly, well-rounded, hardworking, motivated, intelligent, and an excellent role model who always brings a smile to class. According to our chorus teacher, Erin Bradley, Sidney is a talented musician who is also humble and collaborative, and is collaborative among her peers. After graduating next year, Sidney plans to major in musical theater and hopes to one day perform on Broadway. We do look forward to seeing her perform in a great white way, and I look forward to seeing her accept your first Tony. Feel free to give us a thank you. So, congratulations to Sidney for being named Highland High School Student of the Month for September 2019.
Good?
She's used to this. Did you see this crowd that she's having?
I was gonna put you on spot, asking you to sing my song. Next time, next time. Congratulations.
Come see the school's musicals.
I'd like to congratulate certainly all the students, but also the family and, you know, and friends of our students who are here, and really, it does take a community to have such great results. Thank everyone, and really, you are all just a model to your peers to look up to.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to the students.
I know today's a school night, Mr. President, so this, I don't want them to go to bed too late, so now would be a time, if you wanted to exit, to go home and do your homework.
I see you over there, Al.
You can spread out now, right?
Take your pictures, for judging.
Keep this one in mind.
Have a good night, congratulations.
So, Mr. President, we do have another special presentation tonight now, where Karen Brooks ran the Summer Wonder Academy this year, and the theme that the students chose, I believe, was the wonders of the solar system. So, we have a presentation for you, and then so we give any questions afterwards, and stuff, feel free to ask. So, we're gonna play that right now for the board.
We put this together for your members.
Not so long ago, this school took over. 2092, the Wonder Academy of the Solar System began with a group of good and curious space enthusiasts. The evil director of data analysis and systems, Glenn, a summer wonder academy, helped under teaching summer empire on the solar system from 7:22 through 8:02, for two weeks at the Highland Elementary School from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. It was designed to provide two weeks of fun learning to our AIS ENL students to assist in academic progress. The Summer Wonder Academy consisted of five, we invited 150 students, 70 students attended for the 10 days that we were open, eight teachers including an ENL, one specialist, and one science teacher, two teaching assistants, one nursing assistant, and one director principal, and we had a lot of crazy excitement, and planned time, which allowed us to support each other's lessons in each of the content areas. The students set a schedule for a day which consisted of the following groups that they rotated through: English Language Arts, Math, Science, Makerspace, Coding, Snack Time, and Recess. And, we even had a one afternoon field trip to a planetarium in the Neptunipus. So, given the time, the opportunity, and a lot of talent, this is what happened. This was our Makerspace, as well as our Coding class, as you can see the active field trip and the excitement of it. It was reinforcing the math, ENL, and science concepts. Here you see students in the coding class actually making a bracelet that says "Star" in binary code, and you see in math class reinforcing concepts of weight and matter, looking at how much they weigh on the different planets because of such items as gravity. Here you'll see in math class that we did some fun activities, hands-on, students are making a star from the mathematics concepts that they learned in solving problems. And then you'll see here in our Makerspace lab, students learn on the orbit of the planets and how to remember them using a mnemonic device. Here you'll see students in Makerspace even did a mobile of our solar system. And, we learned in science class about different ecosystems, growing food, which is especially important during space exploration, and when we go to other planets, we're gonna be able to need to know how to grow our own food to supply ourselves. Here you see the students' microbrews that they grew on cheese, which we had one day as a snack. And, we also built and raised solar cars, so learn about solar panels, how they function, and what cars need more to make them run better, under different environments, of course, especially on other planets. We even had a surprise visit. This little guy here helped us learn about environments and different adaptations and modifications animals and species need in order to live in the different environments. And, we also looked at and used our school garden to, for our science class to learn how to grow items and what they need to grow, as well as our math class for measurement and data. It was a fun two weeks. As you can see, we even did parachute blocks during recess to learn about gravity and the best way to help our parachutes float. And, we even did more math, studying and analyzing data on how our plants grew, and categorizing the types of fruits and vegetables we harvested. Finally, in the afternoon, from 12:30 to 3:00, we took a field trip to the Neptunipus Planetarium. We had to take two groups because they only have 43 seats, but the kids loved the planetarium, and it was a wonderful show which reinforced our concepts.
Anybody have any questions for Karen?
Certainly. I know you said all those students were of AIS or that level, was it also voluntary?
Yes. What we did was, I took the two AISs, AIS Math and AIS Reading, and I ranked them from bottom to top, and I pulled from the first 150, I looked at like what we had done over the last few years, and I believe we sent out 170 invites of that, it was parents who came back. We also, we had about 70, we had 70 parents send permission slips to attend, that included the ENL students, all ENLs were invited to it. And, the other thing that we did, which was receptive, very receptive by the parents, is if they had another sibling that was either first grade through fifth grade, they could enroll in that too. Most of them didn't take part in it, but they did like that fact that we did that for them, they liked that courtesy.
I mean, I understand all 150 slots weren't filled up, so you'll open it up, but of the population that attended, which ones are truly the target population?
I have to tell you...
Fifty-fifty, seventy-thirty?
You mean of the high, medium, and low AIS? A lot of low. We actually hit, most of them are poverty-based as well, so when I pulled that, we had a lot of kids that were coming in that had not eaten yet in the morning, so next year I would like to add a grab and go breakfast, because the kids were starving. Maria, the director of Food Services, was wonderful because she helped me out with that. When I saw the kids so hungry, I was gonna actually go buy food myself for them, and she nutritionalized what would be better, so she was really great and helped me out with snacks with them for in the morning, which we didn't budget for, and that came from our Food Services Program. So, I really wanna thank Mrs. McCarthy and Mr. Bon Jovi, because they were a big reinforcement for that. And, with me, it is a little better too, because the kids were able to sit down and focus, where the first day or two, they had a hard time focusing because they were so hungry.
What kind of feedback did you get from the kids that completed?
They loved it. They liked how hands-on it was. I have a couple of thank you notes from parents, I even had a couple of parents say that their kids have gone to it every year, this was the best year so far. It was very hands-on, from the start, I told the teachers I wanted no worksheets.
It looks great, and I love the Star Wars theme, thank you.
I track, kind of merge, the space exploration, Star Wars and Star Trek.
Will it be any follow-up? Will it be any follow-up to see how they progressed?
I am trying to track and see how they're doing. Right now, the benchmarks are coming in, a couple of the students that I have, that we had over the summer, I looked at previous years, and their regression is not as, it's still there, but it's not as much as it was in the past. It's older students, I can do, yeah, it's really hard to tell regression, your first graders, I can tell how many from kindergarten, because they're so young, but when I look at the third, fourth, and fifth entering, you get a little better feel, and what I'm seeing right now is that they're not as low as they have been in years past, which we do have numbers for. They're about 10, 15 points higher than in the past.
Is there any way to put a number of, accumulate data on social, the increased socialization and interaction? I know your regression numbers are potential progression, but the increased socialization at that level, is that having positive effects? Is there any way of measuring that?
Actually, my day was pretty much filled up with counseling, negotiation, true principle job. It was go constantly, dealing with parents and kids. I would like to add to it next year, a social worker as well, to deal with that, because there was a lot of group counseling, a lot of the normal things that go on with kids, and basically mediating situations with the kids. Well, you may have to use your words, modeling the correct situation for them, so...
It's like you wouldn't a school setting.
Yeah, exactly, and it was the same thing. Actually, you might even have a little bit more, because it was the summer, and they were hyper.
I'm just using a biased assumption that sometimes the inability to effectively direct a social situation could act as a detrimental effect on their, their scoring, or their actual academic scoring. So, perhaps this, in the social, the increased socializing correction, in a formal space or a space that isn't socially acceptable, might have a positive influence on your direct academic scoring.
It's something we can look at, you know, next year, maybe have the teachers of the students, you know, kind of little measurement, you know, kind of observation.
Mrs. Grant funded, are these title grants, or?
Yes. Sarah knows more how the funding is actually done. We get some money back from the Consortium for ENL, I think we got three grand back for that.
Title one pays for the...
We don't have to be specific, but I know that there's...
Title one pays for the salaries, and Title III pays for the ENL stuff.
Beautiful.
The teachers loved it, they wanna do it next year, I think it's democratic, so next year they wanna do wonders of, wonders of sports, and they wanted to pick the dates because this way they could plan through the year for the topic, as well as plan their vacations for summer, so they could do, because they really like doing this.
That was my question for Karen. I believe you said around 170 invitations went out.
Yes.
Did you get any feedback from those that decided not to attend?
Yes.
For the timing, because of the planned vacations and so forth?
It went out very late. I picked this up mid-May, and I got, I didn't get the actual invites out, because I found out I was doing it at the end of May, beginning of June, so some kids had already gone.
Enrolled, yeah.
So, our goal this year is to get it out by, by spring break, because most parents, by spring break, are enrolling their kids into summer programs. They come out around March, so we're hoping to get it through March. But, the data that we used was, would be the same data, we used our September and January data in order to do the AIS, because otherwise we wouldn't, there was AIS scores in June.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand that. You know, between vacations, summer camps. If you're willing to increase significantly, do we have the resources to maintain the program?
Yes, I could comfortably go to 90, 100.
Absolutely.
Because my office area, could be moved out into the hall, and I could accommodate another classroom.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any other question? Thank you. Okay, acceptance of reports. Do you recall the Board of Education, the Board of Education, on the recommendation that superintendent acknowledges receiving and reviewing and accepting the following reports that is presented at this meeting? Our chair, three-four. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Heather. Discussion. Hold over to there. Close. Our principal's report. Joel, you're up.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Just, just an update on the immunizations, we are pretty much up to date, I think there's one person left to give us their dates. With anyone that is late to the cycle, they have to produce for the Health Office a schedule of when they're going to be getting immunizations, and so, everyone, one person, we're still waiting for dates, but I think they were going this afternoon, so we should have those tomorrow. We finished our, our curriculum nights, so those are, are out of the way, we had lots of people, as we always do. So, thank you to the parents that came out, one of them's at the tables, thank you. Mr. Bon Jovi was there for two of the nights, greeting parents out on the sidewalk, so thank you for being there. The same people are in the lobby, we have the scouts there, the music boosters to provide information for parents. The PTA was there doing a fundraiser of spiritware that was left over from last year, and a small candy sale to raise some funds, to get things going for PTA. And, I ended the evening with an invite of parents to stop and see me in the lobby, because we still clink, and so I met them at the lobster trap, so thank you, Mr. Mizell, for the lobster trap, because it's still coming in handy. It actually is serving as a place for us to drape the bags, so anyone who comes in, they only have to come into the front door, and they can take a bag off the lobster trap and go fill it up, so...
Have you caught any lobsters?
What's that?
Have you caught any lobsters?
We have not, but it's gonna be part of our, our announcements when we are in that contest, of how many lobster traps we've filled. So, the little guys were very interested in the lobsters, the fake plastic lobsters that were inside, so we've actually had to tie those up, because I didn't realize inside a lobster trap, there's actually spikes. So, we had one little guy this summer who was there, they were checking out how to register, and he got the lobster out, but then he got his hand back in there, and it was behind the spike, I was like, oh, no. So, we found a way to tie that up, so that we can get their hands out.
We can modify it if needed.
Thanks for the spike, too. We may actually, it's all tied up, so you can't get in there now, but I may have the custodians take a look at how to get the spike out. They're pretty thick, actually, and they were in water, so they're a little rusty. So, it's all Mr. Mizell's fault.
No, no, no.
Way to go, thank you, to your fault.
And then, just to, just to, with the immunizations, we have seen at the elementary school, especially in first grade, some families have chosen to not do the immunizations and have chosen to homeschool. We actually got a request today, finally, from one of the, the families that is requesting to do homeschooling. I, I hope that they reconsider that and, and enroll the children back in our program. We do have slots for them, so they can come back at any point. And, if anyone does come to you about immunizations, has any questions, please refer them to the Health Office. At any one of the three schools, the, the staff would be more than glad to walk them through what the process is. So, we don't want anyone not coming to school because of immunizations, but we are bound by the, the new law, so. Any questions?
Thanks. Thanks, Joel.
Good evening. In my report, I talked a little bit about instruction with our, some of our new teachers. Early this week, I witnessed a conversation between my music teacher and a science teacher. And, as I came up, I saw him talking in the hallway, I walked up to him, and I just keep, I kept watching the science teacher's face, the smile, and the smile's getting bigger and bigger, and when I walked up, she goes, "He's teaching them the science of music", right? And then he was asking her questions, well, what, how, what language to use for this, and what you... So, there's this connection now that's being made, that are so fantastic, and kids learn so much more, and they're, they were exiting, the general, sixth grade general music students were exiting class with a set of rubber bands, and I asked one of them, that were, I don't know, I guess they used Silly Putty or Play-Doh, and I asked them what they had, and they go, "Show me how it works", and he goes, "I can't, because I have to swing it around, but when I swing it around, the vibrate, the rubber bands vibrate, and it makes sound, and it..." It was really fantastic to watch. So, it's really exciting to see these new, these teachers coming out of teacher training programs with this knowledge of how to do this kind of work, so I'm really happy about that. Any questions?
Thank you. I witnessed, and I stopped on Mr. Hogan a few times, that's our new chorus teacher.
New chorus, new general music teacher.
I'm happy to report the high school does not have any rusty spikes, that I know of, but I'll keep an eye out for it, nor lobster traps.
Was the tennis booster included in the...
It is, actually.
I do three additions to the principal's report. I'm happy to report that we have several new electives up and running. College presentational speaking, which isn't new, but it didn't run the past couple of years, which is public speaking, is up and running with two full classes. We have a couple of classes of workforce ready, that, there was a presentation last year that Mr. Ramirez did for you about that. We're offering the wonder of science, a new science elective, two new music electives, one called Introduction to Keyboard and Strings, in which Ms. Bradley is teaching students the basics of keyboards, the ukulele, and guitar. And, Mr. Shaw is teaching Music Theory and Composition, another elective. Also, we are offering Microsoft Mouse Class, which teaches students in there the platform, the Microsoft platforms, and we also have a new STEM elective called Creative Technologies. So, I'm very happy to report those electives up and running. Yesterday was the first day of our arch program that started, the after-school program for students currently who are on long-term suspensions. We, one student started yesterday, but within the next few weeks, we'll have a few more students coming in. So, today was day two, and so far, so good. And, finally, the homecoming game is next Friday, we're playing Liberty, we're playing against Liberty on Friday, the 27th. Spirit Week will be next week, there will be a pep rally at the end of school next Friday, and there will be, of course, a homecoming dance sponsored by the junior class on Saturday evening in the high school cafeteria. You're welcome to come, but I don't blame you if you don't. Any questions? Bring a rusty spike, who knows?
Play to talk about that spike.
Everyone kinda wanna come see it before it goes. Any questions, Rick? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have some of our directors here this evening, if you have any questions for any of the directors, you're free to ask.
I just wanted to add on to what Dan was saying about some of the new teachers. This was one of the biggest times that we've hired since I've been here, new teachers, and it was actually very exciting in that orientation program, how many of them were talking about their technology integration that they were going to try to pursue with their class. It's like the first time that there was a huge... It's like the first time that there was a huge percentage of them that were asking about getting something in their room. Um, things like the music teachers, they were really, really interested. So it's a very exciting time between the STEM and the music programs for technology right now. Just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, I just wanna thank our directors for, you know, your hard work over the summer to get our building in shape and do all the behind-the-scenes stuff, especially, you know, building the ground and how the buildings look. Uh, exceptional again, as usual. Uh, transportation, I know I saw an article in our, on our homepage about a new safety initiative with that six-foot arm that now is coming out on one of the bus runs. Uh, hopefully that will increase the awareness of, of the public and increase safety with our children on the buses. So, uh, kudos to you for, you know, that initiative and again to Maria and Carol. Uh, hopefully we have a successful year.
Are you sure the bus on my head was a commercial? Over the summer, we, we are safe, passed legislation that allows for cameras on the, the arm. Uh, are we thinking about?
Our, our cameras are on the bus.
No, the arm.
No, no.
People weren't stopping.
Aren't we able to do that currently?
On our, on our camera systems right now, um, yes, we have dash cams. We can pick up cars that are passing, so.
Okay, so anyone?
Yeah, we can see that, yes.
Good, thank you. Anything else for, uh, directors? Okay, uh, we'll move on to personnel. We're going to take personnel as a block from A to I, J, K.
Well, I think there's, is it the arch on there twice?
Because we state the inadvertently letters C and E are the same thing. The arch is on there twice. Uh, it's like a fair note, okay?
We'll strike E and E C.
Okay. And it does go up to J on the next page. We did it to addendums at the last minute, just late this afternoon, we wanted to get them on.
So to re-letter them, it would be?
The I. The I, if you re-letter theoretically, yes.
Okay. Um, anybody have any, you can pull out if you want. If you have no objection, we'll be, uh, personnel, the block from A through J and strike E. Okay, can I have a motion to move at the block? Motion by Tom, seconded by Sue. Any discussion?
Um, extremely high hopes for the arch program. I think it's absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Yes, I, we'll have three students in at the beginning of October.
And please thank all the folks that is involved in this.
Under the teacher's assignment, is that meant the English literature or is it elective or not? Was it elective this, uh?
It's an elective. She'll be teaching, yes. It's her choice. I, I, we haven't talked about it yet because she starts Thursday, but she'll be ready for it. Um, probably an English elective, we, we were talking about public speaking.
Oh, it would be in English, it has to fill that, the English, you know, the area.
We already have an English teacher on Monday. Uh, on Monday, Ms. Santagata teaches the English. She should be on.
This is an elective credit for them. Just have your, missing a teacher.
I don't see a teacher, an English teacher.
So Ms. Meyer is not teaching the English literature part? Very good question, good eye. Um, Ms. Santagata.
I just always value English literature, so I have to.
Make sure he adds Stephanie Santagata to this list.
Thank you for the key nodding.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you, Ed, for putting in that time for this, thank you.
Yes.
This is exciting, hopefully.
Yeah, that's, yes.
I also wanted to comment, Mr. President. Um, I just saw late this afternoon, um, Alan Benson has been with us for a number of years. Has a part-time PE teacher at the elementary school and then the rest of his time as a teaching assistant. So, uh, he's really put in a lot of time here in Highland, a very popular teacher. He got a full-time PE job at one of our neighboring districts. Uh, so I do wish him well and thank him for everything he's done for us through his life. Yeah.
Any other, uh, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Close. So carry. While the business in operations, we go through the budget transfers being resolved, the Board of Education on the recommendation superintendent includes the following budget transfer for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number nineteen forty for sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars, uh, sorry, sixty-one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And budget transfer two-two-seven-seven for ninety-five thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Tom.
Can you just get an explanation of those two large figures?
The first, the transfer number nineteen forty is at the request of Ms. Cordash, that is to purchase, um, computer equipment through Voces. So we're moving it from the equipment code to the Voces code. Second budget transfer number two-two-seven-seven, um, by carried over funds for the unanticipated expense of a special education teacher. And that will allocate those carried over funds to the appropriate code.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Close. So carry. Assistant Superintendent is not here this evening, that's how superintendent is.
Be more than having mixed, God, I'm so surprised at the moment.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, so this week I represent, uh, Highland and Ulster County on the Ulster County Public Health Task Force. So we meet, uh, four times a year. Uh, so we met, uh, at the, uh, in Kingston on Monday, yesterday. So September, I know that September is national preparedness month. I know we're almost, we're more than halfway through. But there's some things, uh, to look at. The first week of September, save early for disaster costs. So they suggest for families to, you'll look into check your insurance, make sure you have the proper coverage and to look into flood insurance, you know, especially if you're near any sort of body of order. Uh, the second week, make a plan to prepare for disasters. So make an emergency plan, sign up for any alerts on your phone, any disaster alerts. Uh, we are in week three now. This is teach youth to prepare for disasters. Teach your children what to do in an emergency, where to go. And then finally, week four is get involved in community preparedness. So take classes, AED, CPR, uh, check on some of your neighbors. So that was one of the topics covered at the meeting. Secondly, uh, yes, I attended the, uh, two of the three curriculum nights. Did a great job. I, I do wanna thank especially besides, you know, the community groups who are there, uh, you know, taking the time. And the, certainly the PTA does an incredible job, you know, they were there, uh, all, all the nights. But the Cub Scouts and, uh, Randy Raddick was out, the music boosters, um, Sam, the, the Girl Scouts were there. So, uh, thank you to all those groups, really. And, uh, it was great seeing the parents, seeing a lot of the kids coming with the parents. Um, and, and I'm not just saying this, Mr. Freer and Dr. Ruck, you can, a lot of the parents coming in were commenting about the Monday message. Right, and were.
It's true.
They like, and killed them to say that.
You said they were commenting, you didn't say it was positive.
No.
Probably it was positive.
Yeah, probably it was positive.
I actually did meet him there. If you listen to the message he talked, because the last thing he talked about was, um, having a pet rock. So when you got there, I had a rock in my hand. He's like, what's up with the rock? I'm like, it's my pet, I've had it since I was little. He kinda looked at me like, so I wanted, like, you just said it on the, it was good.
Yes.
Shag carpet.
So that's, so this was, uh, to spark conversation with your children. Sometimes it's difficult to get them to talk about their day for, for anyone who has kids. And even my kid from college, I get one-word answers. So these are, uh, the grade eight. So we talked about the seventies, the next week with the eighties and then the nineties. So the seven, eight great thing, that, things that made it great to be alive in the seventies. So it was, um, the fast, the wide collar shirts and the bell bottoms. Uh, going from vinyl to eight-track cassette, having all of those. Pong, the first ever video game.
Yeah.
Uh, shag carpets, I might, yeah, especially in the van. Uh, Star Wars. Star Wars, just being the fact that Star Wars was brand-new and we had no expectation what it was going to be. And it was incredible, like, wow. And it blew our minds, I remember, uh, seeing Star Wars for the first time. Um, and I said, you were definitely the coolest kid on the block if you had a banana seat on your bike.
Yeah.
Right? With the bar, oh, yeah, yep.
And the big handlebars.
Rotary phones were, uh, interesting time. Even if you wanted to speed it up, you kinda had to force it back a little faster. It really couldn't go too much faster. Uh, and then finally, pet rocks, the greatest pet ever. Um, and we'll talk about the eighties next Monday. Um, this, uh, this Thursday.
Nice about the rotary phone, you can dial your own number one away and ring and your mother's number answer. Do that with your rotary phone. When it has zero, you have to like wait for a number.
Yes.
Put it down to ring.
Yeah.
Somebody answering, you can do another one.
This Thursday is middle school, uh, meet the teacher night. That's at six PM, I believe. And the next Tuesday is the high school, pronounced at six PM. Uh, we do have a support services meeting tomorrow at one PM. Uh, we did get word today, I'm very happy to say that all of our projects, the two thousand eighteen project were approved S E B. And we're just awaiting, uh, building permits for those. So we'll talk about that more tomorrow. Well, tomorrow we'll go over a, uh, time schedule. We're a little ahead of schedule, so hopefully we can, we're looking to go out to bid, uh, perhaps in November instead of December. So get ahead of the bidding process. Um, we do have to do the ever-popular district core. Now we can choose a particular building or we wanna have the board meeting at one of the other buildings. Now our next board meetings, we have October first, October fifteenth and November twelfth. Um, if we wanted to talk about maybe having one of those board meetings at one of the other buildings, uh, I mean, we could tour the high school at any normal meeting. We can take a little time, uh, for, you know, during executive session, do a tour here. But if we wanted to have the board meeting at one of the other buildings, maybe at the elementary or middle and then just take the time to tour. It is a board requirement.
I always look at the board meetings every two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, because in the past, we would meet here and, and tour the building and come back.
Right.
Stay right here, we could do three buildings in three different boards.
Is there any particular?
November twelfth, when I was trying to do the math in the winter program, but I could try to do another one as well.
Well, we have October first, October fifteenth. Is October fifteenth better for you, Mr. Freer? Is that what you think?
If we're gonna, if we're gonna show anything, like, because we have to put that on the calendar that we're gonna do that in the winter.
So give them a little time, maybe do it on the fifteenth at the elementary school. And you think you can do it on November twelfth at the middle school?
Yeah, I was gonna say it's best if early October, we're still here, we're trying to, because.
That sound good, everyone? So at least if you can do that. So the November, October fifteenth will be at the elementary school and November twelfth will be at the middle school. Great? Okay? And then finally, uh, this coming, you know, weekend is the, uh, the NISCUS conference, near-state council of school superintendents. Probably pending that. I'll be picking up some good knickknacks to bring back here. That's all I have right now.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, moving along, uh, the Board of Education, new business. We have a donation acceptance. Do you resolve the Board of Education on the recommendation superintendent sets the donation of free gift card valued at twenty-five dollars each from Divine and Brooks Travel to be awarded to top preschools in the online summer math pilot program. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Heather. Discussion.
As I said, thank Divine and Brooks Travel for this great donation. I believe that Brooks is like the carrot books.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Close. So carry. Uh, creation of a head custodian position. Do you resolve the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent includes the creation of head custodian positions for Highland Central School District? Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille. Discussion.
So this is something we've discussed, uh, several times in the past. So we have the title already of head custodian. We don't have, so we're adding another position. So according to my, uh, partners, we have to create a new position first before we can just push the new position. So this is just creating a head custodian position and the intent is that this will be a district-wide, uh, they won't be assigned in the one building, they'll be assigned district-wide. You'll oversee each of the buildings.
Any evening responsibility, Miss Portis?
Possible.
For groups?
Yes, that is possible on as-needed basis.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Close. So carry. And FYI, uh, the Elster County School Boards Association meeting, scheduled for October tenth, six PM. We, we're going through RSVP to please.
Right, that's the kickoff meeting as well.
Yeah, we sent our presentation to them. And, uh, at the moment, Sue and I are going. You know, it's tough to get another night, but if you can't, we will, we will send us.
I think I'm coming that evening, but all RSVP.
Okay. It is also national outside induction night here at the high school. Yeah.
Okay, uh, anyone have anything for any other old business? Any new business? Yes.
Uh, just wanted to remind you, audit meeting to take place October first.
Oh, thanks for reminding.
What time is that?
Okay, so, um, what time would work for you?
Five thirty.
Is five thirty okay for the audit committee?
At five thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. And just another reminder on the, um, Mid Hudson School Study for the Awards of Excellence to RSVP, um, to myself, Dr. Carley by October fourth.
October fourth?
Great.
That's what I mean, the tenth or that's on?
Oh, and one other.
That's on the seventeenth, that's the awards for excellence, that's me and Paul's year nine, yeah.
And one last thing, the Board of Ed Pictures. Ed, we're likely to be around to get the winner of the day.
We're only gonna do it here.
The last two years, we have not, Ed.
Ed, you choose the day.
I just, while we're in a, you know, I mean, I, I just wanted to, it was rescheduled a year before, three times. And then the one year where I can't make it.
Well, we can do it next meeting, so.
I just, I don't know, that's the new superintendent.
So I would like to suggest October first.
Rescheduled and then you couldn't make the reschedule date and that's why we took.
So does October first work?
October first, okay. It got rescheduled and then we just had to do it. I, I serve at the will of the president, so. Oh, boy, here we go. Here we go. I think that answers your question. We have no old business, let me have a little. I do wanna make one comment. We had him, uh, twice tonight, um, regarding Karen Brooks, like she, she mentioned when she was doing the summer program, she was wanting to buy this, it was breakfast out of her pocket. Uh, she mentioned being willing to do that. And then we hear about these donations of the gift certificates as well. I, I just wanna thank you so much for your dedication. And I think it's more of a, it's, it's not an exception, it tends to be the rule, I think, for people here, how generous teachers, administrators and directors can be. And, uh, but I, in one sitting tonight, we learned two moments, which were incredibly generous. And then, of course, the time when we jumped in to, to, to help with the breakfast. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, no other, uh, old business, anything for the good and welfare of the district? Okay, we'll now open the meeting up to public comments. Yes, name, please.
Hello, my name is Melissa Swinton, the four. My daughter is, I'm an eighth grade student, going all through the system. And I just had a question. I noticed that you talked earlier about hiring some new teachers. Teaching staff has been great, so no complaints. My just, my concern is the diversity of the teaching force and how much outreach is being done to ensure diversity. There are studies that show the importance of a diverse teaching force for all students, but in particular for minority students. And I know, being eight years in the system, my daughter has not had a teacher of color. And so I'm just wondering what has been done to ensure the diversity of the hires.
Well, our, our process is post.
Sure, right, so, yeah, so we use OLOS, which basically, you know, every school in the three county area, really the state use. You know, certainly, we have interviewed, but we, you know, people of different nationalities and races, but we don't get a lot of people applying from different nationalities or races.
Right, sometimes there's special events that they have for educators from a diverse background that maybe we can consider if Highland might attend or participate.
We will certainly look into that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Mary Ann, how do you get to the Monday messages? I don't have, I don't have to, you know, how you.
Oh, how do you get them?
Yeah, how do I get them?
Well, it only goes to, we'll put you on the list. Right now, it only goes to the students, you know, parents and guardians of students. But if anyone else wants, we will add you, because it is a special list.
We say your name, doesn't it ask you much?
Yeah.
I highly recommend so.
So she's asking us something, right?
She's, this is her favorite first public comment.
I'll make sure you get Monday on.
She's, she's tomorrow.
Yes. There are minutes on that list. And that's Mary Ann. Say your name, please.
But she's never gonna talk again.
We're all gonna be thinking about next Monday, you know, and be like.
And at our next meeting, she's gonna have to be taken.
She just wants to hear about the evening, not the Monday.
That's right, yeah. The one you've done. Right, Joel, I think it was over.
Okay, any other public comments? Motion to adjourn to go into executive session for contract negotiation. Motion, please, motion by Mike, second by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.